Okay, the floor is yours. State your names for the record and please make your statement. If the green light is on, then you're on.
Great. Hi, my name is Wendy Hart. I'm with Buffalo Cannabis Movement, as a volunteer. I'm also a patient. I did, I was one of the lucky few to get my New York Medical Marijuana Card and have been treating with cannabis oil about three months now. It has greatly helped my abdominal pain. So I was able to get that at a local dispensary. I've been, Dr. Meckler is my referring neurologist. I have abdominal problems and neurological problems, so he referred me under the neurological issues. So I was able to get my THC oil here locally. I also did travel to the Rochester dispensary because they were the first in our western New York area to have a vaporized product because of my gastroentero, my GI tract does not react well to CBD oil. So every patient is different in what type of product and the method of how they take that product. So I have really been lucky in finding the doctor to help me. My primary referred me, Dr. Meckler is treating me, my neurological symptoms and my Crohn's disease. But I had to travel to two different dispensaries to get that. Here in western New York, we're lucky to have two of them in Amherst, which is only a 45-minute drive from me, but Rochester was, you know, quite a haul. It was a five-hour drive. But in any event, most patients in this area are still not able to find a doctor that is willing to refer them. Most doctors won't even discuss cannabis with them. They want nothing to do with it. A lot of it has to do with the education. I mean, the doctors aren't getting the full education of the research that's been done, not only in the serious conditions under the Compassionate Care Act, but there's been tons of research done in relation to curbing addiction, which are opiate addiction, you know, pain pills that are being over-prescribed and the opiate deaths and so forth. There's been many, many studies done and many articles written by researchers about how cannabis can cure addiction. It makes it easier to commit to get off pills. For example, someone that's been on chronic pain, like I have, I've been on pain pills for 20 years. I've had abdominal problem after problem for over 20 years. So as soon as I started the THC, the CBD, THC oil, I was able to decrease my pills by half. I'm working to get further down the line and hopefully with the vaporized product I can decrease that. But there's proof out there that cannabis, it makes it easier to commit to get off the pills for those that are seriously physically addicted. Cannabis can reduce the withdrawal symptoms of insomnia, muscle aches, vomiting, diarrhea, spasm, and that's not only with, you know, actual legitimate prescribed pain pills from doctors, but as far as someone going through a heroin withdrawal or some other hard drug withdrawal, those symptoms can be alleviated by cannabis, whether it's medical or in any other form. There's research out there, tons of research out there that it proves that it curbs addiction. Specifically, it can lift a person's mood to face the next hours, days, and weeks of mental struggle. Everyone knows somebody that's trying to take the habit of some pill or some drug or another. You know, first few hours, great, but after that, your mental struggle is challenged by the physical symptoms that usually cause relapse. But there's plenty of research out there. States that have legalized have decreased in opiate deaths by 25 percent. That's, there's an article in the Journal of American Medicine in 2014 that's proven. Opiate deaths decreased by 25 percent in states that have legalized medical marijuana or in marijuana. Chronic pain patients report that cannabis works better than pills in functioning pain levels, and I'm proof of that. The THC medicine has helped, helps better than the pills that I'm being prescribed. So, and the effects of opiates increase, the effect of opioids increase with cannabis. So that someone is using pain pills in conjunction with medical marijuana, it makes their medication that much more effective. It helps boost the, it helps boost the blood levels and it helps to decrease, decrease use of the pain medicine. Okay, so that was my medical update. I also have a letter of one of our members that wasn't able to attend today. She's, she's had a lot of medical problems and she's been struggling, and I said I would read her letter. This is from Mary, Mary Higgins, Anne Eckley, Michael Payne, Mary and Michael. And she emailed this to Scanlon today. Dear Buffalo Councilmembers, I'm writing today to urge my support for both the Buffalo Cannabis Act and the Buffalo Medical Cannabis Act. If the Buffalo Cannabis Act is approved, the need for the Buffalo Medical Cannabis Act goes away. The Buffalo Cannabis Act would require fewer public resources to enact and would in the end save the city of Buffalo money. Under this bill, adults over 21 would be allowed to use marijuana recreationally, much as they already do with alcohol. There has been little to no evidence of harm to the public by allowing such use, although prosecuting such use create, that follows, creates a lifetime of disruption and personal life. The current Erie County Medical Marijuana Law leaves out many medical conditions such as rheumatoid arthritis that are already covered in many other states with many medical marijuana laws. My husband and I both live in Buffalo, New York, and have medical issues that medical marijuana would help. Currently, his condition with severe chronic pain and muscle spasms is covered, just recently, last week, got to see a doctor. But my severe rheumatoid arthritis is not. When we lived in Washington State a few years ago, I was certified as a medical marijuana patient and saw a significant decrease in inflammation and disease activity, as well as reduction in pain. The current prices of obtaining medicine at the very few approved dispensaries is prohibited at over several hundred dollars per month, per person, and is not covered by any insurance. With social security disability, income is our only source of income. This is an unfair burden. Additionally, there are only 20 dispensaries for the entire state and the products vary from one dispensary to another. This means that we have to drive to Rochester to get my husband's medicine because the Amherst and Williamsville facilities do not carry the product that, that the doctor prescribed. Even if all facilities carried all products, transportation to the dispensaries is a major obstacle for many patients, especially those who do not drive, they physically can't drive, or who rely on public transportation. If we were allowed to legally grow our own plants, as we can do currently with fruits, vegetables, and herbs, we could produce our own medicine, with the only significant cost being that for electricity for indoor growths. There's significant evidence to support the full plant extract is being more beneficial than extracting only one or two compounds, as is done under New York's current practice. In regards to recreational use, there is far less harm to public by allowing adults over 21 to use marijuana recreationally than alcohol, which is legal. I can see no good reason for the city of Buffalo to continue to spend its limited financial resources on enforcing an outdated prohibition on a plant which is so safe that overdose deaths are nonexistent and which actually offers many medicinal benefits to many patients, including those that are unable to afford or obtain medical marijuana. In states where medical marijuana has been legalized, opioid overdose have dropped by as much as 25 percent, like I said, or more, as many patients have been able to reduce or replace their need for opioid pain medication with medical marijuana. Continue the public policy of prohibition against marijuana, aka cannabis, is to continue an outdated policy that harms rather than benefits the public. My husband and I would have been at today's legislative meeting, but we're not physically up to making the trip downtown in the several hours of meeting time. Our hope our letter can be presented in oral testimony and at the exits.
Thank you. If you could say in one sentence, what do you want us to do? Say it in one sentence. What are you asking of this body?
I would love it if you could find a way through the Buffalo Charter to put on the ballot for the public to vote on whether they would allow dispensaries in and around the city of Buffalo. Governor Cuomo, Commissioner Zucker have failed to consider, consider our area, consider the city of Buffalo in any way. As far as access, taxing, money, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer that there should be, there should be a dispensary here. And the Senate had, you know, they had many bills in front of them this last legislative session, including adding nurse practitioners, which actually didn't even need to be a bill because the Compassionate Care Act already allows that Commissioner Zucker can right now sign into, into effect nurse practitioners being able to be a referring, a referring practitioner. He can already do that. So why hasn't he done that? Why is it so difficult for so many people to get where I am, to get the help of, you know, the effects that this medicine allows?
Thank you for explaining that. Mr. Beany, or this gentleman?
My name is Anthony Scazafavo. I'd like to thank the council for their time. I have to say that if I was in a position of power where my decision affected the lives of everyday people, I would not be able to sleep at night if I didn't do everything within my skill set to help those in need, or at least those asking for help. We have politicians not hearing the voices of people. We have doctors who are scared to even write patient referrals to certified medical marijuana physicians because of the strict legal requirements involved, with some politicians saying there's no data, when there are plenty of preliminary study showing benefits of medical marijuana with a variety of diseases that are available in other countries and online, and others, other politicians saying that the law is the law and it's illegal. Something has got to change. I have a family member who has survived throat cancer and will live out the rest of their life with numerous permanent side effects, all of which that could be helped with cannabis. They cannot get access to medical marijuana because Roswell would drop them as a pain management, which would render them unable to live any sort of normal, less painful life. Roswell is one of the top cancer facilities in the country, but they won't even support one of their own patients going to another doctor to receive medicine that Roswell does not offer, let alone research for themselves, which they should be doing. And mainly, I think the reasons come down to politics and money. There are plenty of people that already use or know the benefit of cannabis, but cannot speak up due to fear of losing their jobs, money, and all the other stigma wrongfully associated with cannabis. Things need to change. Just think how crazy it would be to fire or not hire someone because they drink on the weekends or support some new drug that saves lives, but happens to be illegal or unapproved. I urge the council to self-educate on the benefits of cannabis and to really ask themselves, am I doing everything within my skill set to help those whom I serve? Am I willing to come at this issue with an open mind? I don't think doctors need an incentive to help people, but they do need to be able to do it without fear of losing their license or a DEA violation. If we need to come at this in steps, step one is changing the way you think. I urge the council to consider bringing the BCA or the MRTA to a vote and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beany?
Thank you, council, for hearing us speak and allowing your time. I just want to say that-
Just state your name.
Yeah, my apologies. I'm Anthony Beany. I'm a health volunteer with the Buffalo Cannabis Movement. I just want to say that, you know, the state laws are the state laws and the city only has so much power, but you can pass another resolution to tell the state legislature that they need to move. You guys can pass a resolution telling the governor that he needs to act. You guys can pass a resolution telling the nearest state department of health that they need to act. These are things that you can do. You can create a committee to oversee the implementation of the Compassionate Care Act in a way that truly benefits the people of Buffalo. That is something that you can do. So I don't want to hear that we can't do anything. I don't, I don't want to hear that. We did do something last year and it passed unanimously. We passed a resolution and we sent it to the governor. Yeah, there was no response, but we can do it again because there are people that are suffering and we need to do something about that. We need to put people before profit. Thank you for your time.
Now, I presume you testified in front of state representatives also?
I've contacted my state senator, Mark Panapinto. He's useless.
Lemine, have you had any hearings locally? Because they all go to the state building and there are hearings.
Krista People Stokes did hold a hearing on October 28th, but that was only specific to the Marijuana Regulation Taxation Act, which is legalization. It's recreational, similar to Colorado. The thing is, is that they're waiting to see how they can tax it. Our issue should be how do we serve the people of Buffalo best?
Thank you, Mr. Beany.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Thank you for hearing me today. My name is Edward Garrett. I'm the chairman of the Erie County Libertarian Party. I am also a volunteer with the Buffalo Cannabis Movement. I don't have a lengthy speech prepared to today for the medical cannabis item despite the fact that I am a combat veteran and a licensed nurse and something of a subject matter expert on the chemical properties of THC and CBD and how they do actually affect the various conditions that others have discussed today. But I do have a couple of items to consider. As Anthony Beany said, yes, very often we hear that at the city and county levels that there's not much that can be done, and that is, that is incorrect. There is plenty that can be done, and if nothing else, people need to start seeing that this is not the, trying to think of the proper word here. This is not the issue that people think it is. We're not talking about something that is without precedent. We're not talking about something that is terribly harmful to anyone. The brain stem responsible for all of the vital functions of, of the body, such as regulating heart rhythms, respiration, has almost no receptors for THC or CBD located on it. It is literally impossible to overdose on cannabis, impossible medically. And since we do have the Compassionate Care Act situated in such a way that it is impossible for patients who do have coverage and are able to navigate the monstrosity of bureaucracy in order to maintain a medical cannabis card, then we'll find that it's difficult to afford it. Doctors will kick you out of their practice, as I have seen doctors do. The VA will not recommend it for their patients. Most major doctors and hospitals, medical groups will not recommend it.
Why not?
Because of the stigma surrounding it. Most of them are afraid of federal action and because nobody is actually taking a stand to explain to people, this is legal medicine. This is, we already have a law that says that this is legal. Most people don't even, I think, truly understand the nature of what we're discussing. And this includes doctors. This includes healthcare facilities who, for the most part, are afraid of being sued or being gone after by the DEA. So this concludes my, my discussion on this particular point, but you'll hear from me again on the next item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Robinson, a community activist. My problem with all of this is five children have died that could have been saved if they would have, excuse me, got this to them in time. There is no reason for this to be held up anywhere when children's lives are at stake. No way to do this. It's, it's an injustice to everybody to have this happen. We have one of the best medical campuses that's going to be in the United States, right here in Buffalo, and yet you have to go to Amherst in order to acquire medical marijuana. It's an outrage. But I believe that no child should have to suffer or lose its life for something that could save them. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Chairman?
Motion is to send without recommendation?
Motion to send items 13 and 14 that have been taken.
We have, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I think there's somebody here to speak on item 14.
Oh, 14. I thought we were taking it all in one big grab basket.
One is medical marijuana and the other one is just cannabis act.
Right. Okay. Who's next? Oh, this gentleman here, okay. So we've already, we've sent without rec item 13, and now what is before us is item 14, which is Buffalo Cannabis Act. And just state your names for the record.
My name's Nicholas Posrato. I'm speaking as both a member of Buffalo Cannabis Movement, as well as elected deputy director of Western New York Normal. I was diagnosed with Crohn's disease in 2000 after a trip to the hospital for rapid blood loss almost proved fatal for me. Since the day I was discharged, I made a commitment to myself that I would not take the pills that were prescribed to me, which warned of terrible side effect, as some as serious as heart failure. Instead, I decided that I would do what many other people just like me are doing. I medicate with cannabis in order to alleviate the symptoms that I experience daily. The anti-inflammatory and analgesic properties of cannabis have effectively replaced the lifetime of prescription medication and only caused a fraction of what prescription medications do. It's to my understanding that under the current medical laws, I would be one of the lucky few that qualify for a medical cannabis recommendation. However, with the list of doctors that are certified to recommend cannabis treatment being kept secret by the Department of Health, I understand the frustration of all the New Yorkers that don't even know where to begin looking for help. With an injury I sustained last year preventing me from working, I decided to delve even deeper into the cannabis industry. I became affiliated with cannabis startup company out of Massachusetts and met some other successful cannabis-based business owners. I also saw firsthand how a properly-run medical cannabis program can function, and these professionals have taken me under their wing to mentor me. As an expert in black market cannabis, Scott Pitano, CEO of Social High, had the following to say of the need to regulate cannabis. People who are being helped by cannabis are forced to the black market and have to trust they are getting the medicine that they are being given. Legalization is mostly about regulation. States have decriminalized, which is only a boost to the black market. The next logical step is regulation so patients can safely access properly-produced medicine. States who support decriminalization but not full legalization are only essentially supporting the black market and are not helping patients. I also had the pleasure of speaking with Cara Crab Burnham, the dean of faculty at the Northeastern Institute of Cannabis. The NIC offers courses such as compliance, cultivation, state laws and regulations, introduction to business concepts, and other courses to properly certify students and prepare them for jobs within the cannabis industry. She believes that Buffalo can learn the right way too and offered the following comment of her experience with the medical cannabis industry. Education is essential for any industry, especially medical industries. The staff of these dispensing locations need to be able to teach patients how to use their medication efficiently and safely. With opiate deaths on the rise, clearly, patients have not been shown how to use their prescribed medication safely. There's got to be a time that you drop conventional method and start looking for safer treatment. Studies have already proven that cannabis can replace many of the dangerous opiate drugs that are extremely addictive and even help to wean people off that are already in the grip of addiction, as cannabis has been shown to reduce the symptoms of opiate withdrawal. Additionally, cannabis carries almost no abuse rate in any documented study, and it has been proven that cannabis is 114 times safer than alcohol. So why then are cannabis users alienated and opiate users are being catered to? Anyone that follows the drug war closely can tell you that it's because of money that pill manufacturers pump into the state. The cannabis industry is projected to top $40 billion in the next five to 10 years. Buffalo can certainly benefit from becoming involved in this green rug. Statistically, the majority of all voters support full legalization of cannabis for adult. I may just be one citizen of Buffalo, but I am speaking on behalf of the entire city when I ask for you to vote yes on the Buffalo Cannabis Act. This isn't just something that's going to go away. The scales have tipped. Even Microsoft is investing in legal cannabis as of June 2016. According to a recent survey conducted by TravelandLeisure.com, which is also reported locally by WIVB, Buffalo, New York is currently the number one city to visit in the United States. The potential revenue created by tourists who would be making the trip to yet another area that allows responsible adult youth could be very beneficial to our city. A vote against the Buffalo Cannabis Act is a vote against economic growth in Buffalo. The choice is simple. Vote yes on the Buffalo Cannabis Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the council, thank you for your time and consideration of these measures. My name is Kevin Krueger. I'm here as a representative of the Erie County Libertarian Party, as well as the Buffalo Cannabis Movement and Western New York Normal. Now, before I address the reasons why cannabis should be legal, let's take a moment to return when, to when it was made illegal in the first place. People have lived under the impression that the people that make rules for them have our interests at heart and not their own for a very long time. This is demonstrably false. We hear a lot of noise today about lobbyists and corporate entities seizing the strings of government, but where was the uproar in 1937 when the federal government, on behalf of DuPont, William Randolph Hearst, and other such special interests, banned cannabis with evidence as dubious as anything used in the Inquisition? Virtually all of the evidence that the federal government used in its arguments to ban it have been shown to be lies, not to mention the more outlandish arguments made when making it illegal. You can look up in the congressional record arguments about how white women will want to associate with Negro jazz musicians, for an example. This is how ridiculous they had to get to ban this. Only years later, they say, oh, you'll be an ax murderer, like they said in Reeve for Madness. Only decades later, say, oh, you'll be so passive, you'll let communism take over, somehow not seeing the contradiction there that both of those can't be true. The government has continuously made up poor excuse after poor excuse as to why it gets to ban nature. The amount of money we spend on this foolishness is obscene, especially given all the things we are finding out now. As he mentioned earlier, it's been determined it's 114 times safer than alcohol. That got reported on by the Daily Mail, the Washington Times, all over the place. I have charts, actually, that show just how different we're talking about here. Pass those around. One short, most of you'll get a copy. Meanwhile, the northeastern United States while all this is going on, both in our neck of the woods, New Hampshire, and other places, are experiencing a gargantuan opiate abuse epidemic. In the case of heroin, a lot of it seems to contain fentanyl, amplifying the danger by several times. Multiple people are dying a week. I have known to various degrees around a dozen people who have died of opiate abuse in the last five years. The fact that New York State can swander roughly $687 million a year of our money chasing after a plant 114 times safer than alcohol while this is going on is offensive. The irony of outlawing cannabis for our own good is the government has made the world a far more dangerous place than it could be otherwise. Over a plant that has no reachable LD-50, you cannot die from use alone. We have created a violent game of cat and mouse where marijuana is sold by criminals because of its black market status. See, here's what happens when a desirable product is made illegal. Public thinks X is scary. Authorities ban X to make public feel safe. There's no legal way to obtain X then, therefore the value of X increases. A black market forms. Organized crime gains a new source of income. Organized crime grows. Frequency of violent crime increases. Law enforcement uses harsher tactics. Criminals become more violent, and then it just loops at those last three until the moment where you finally admit, perhaps, we really can't take a product out of people's hands if it's something they so desire and they're not hurting anyone else. Until that point happens, the cycle of violence and gangs will continue to happen, and you'll have even more blood on your hands for a plant that otherwise would never have killed anyone. But that does not seem to matter. Cannabis was made illegal for its utility after all and not in spite of it. Rather than admit that- Rather than admit that politicians have been selling themselves the whole time and not just recently, you instead, like Ozzy Madenius, plow forward, consequences be damned, on a matter that the public truly understood would never be allowed to continue as it has. If you guys actually had to ask for voluntary contribution to fund these ridiculous programs, no one would do it. Hey, New York, want to spend $687 million a year to ban a safe alternative to alcohol? The reason you don't do that is you know full well no one would support it. So instead of trying to sell it like the more honest people out there, you force us to pay for these things. The public never gets to decide on anything directly. We are merely granted an opportunity to shuffle lever pullers around every couple of years. Prohibition has got to be one of the most daunting and foolish tasks we have ever undertaken as a species. Not only is it essentially, as Frank Zappa would say, treating dandruff by decapitation, but it is actually worse than that. The only logical equivalent I can think of in nature is when a hamster eats its own children to prevent them from being eaten by a predator. Fight or flight is of no consequence in the absurd dichotomy you have created. And also, for the record, it's illegal is not an argument against anything. It is an appeal to authority. Laws are an arbitrary judgment made by whoever has political power at the time. Laws are a means for a government to regulate people in a way that they see fit, but that does not make them universal standards of morality. Illegality is not an argument. When there is no victim, there is no crime. You cannot commit a crime against yourself because your own actions are voluntary. You've chosen to do whatever you did. Also, for the record, that New York touts itself as quote-unquote "progressive" when our industrial hemp program is more constrictive than Kentucky's, and we have arguably one of, if not the, worst medical... If it weren't for the government, that the have-nots would be able to get by. While you won't even let them get decent medication for their conditions, at least as far as beyond the 10 conditions allowed. There's a very good reason why so many states have far-reaching medical programs, and that is because there are dozens, if not hundreds, of different strains that are better for dealing with different types of medical problems. This is also why actual marijuana is often used in these states instead of just the derivatives that were allowed here. But I shouldn't expect government to generally understand or regulate these things intelligently considering the track record of thousands of years of making everything worse that it touches, the opposite of King Midas, where instead of gold, everything touched turns to ruin. The fact of the matter is, if the government actually wanted to have a decent civil society, then the law books would consist of the following and nothing else: do not harm one another, do not take each other's stuff, do not force yourself on anyone, and generally mind your own business. But the chances the government will actually do this, since their business model ostensibly just is harm people, take their stuff, and know everything about their business, it's slim to none and slim as out of town. You have an opportunity to start turning this around now, however, by taking a small step in the right direction and considering the measures we have presented. Thank you.
Was Reefer Madness a Hearst-produced production?
Pardon?
Was Reefer Madness a Hearst documentary?
He'd put some money into his various, well, his other interests, because he had developed a process for processing paper where he would have, the hemp industry would have outbid it. He would have been outcompeted. So rather than actually face the market, he, through his newspaper empire and other means of propaganda, put out false information.
You remember that film Reefer Madness, which I think was prior to the 1937 banning, is that right?
Right. That's what I'm saying, is an argument leading up to it. In order for the government to actually act on something so silly, he had to lie about it for a while.
Okay.
I count amongst that.
Got you. Thanks. I didn't know, I didn't realize that 1937, the Hearst involvement, until I thought about that film. Anybody else? Yeah, you spoke. Are you going to give us the Reader's Digest version?
I just wanted to touch base on a different topic, having to do with...
Just state your name for the record again.
Wendy Hart.
Thank you.
I wanted to touch base on the issues that have a lot to do with the recent police shootings and the way that the public views police officers. There's a national organization called LEAP.
Is this relating to the marijuana issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Directly. Law enforcement against prohibition. There's a group, a national group of law enforcement, judges, you know, attorneys, police officers, and so forth. I'd just like to read one statement that is from a police captain named Diane Goldberg, and she is with the national group, but she is actually from Maryland, relating to the war on drugs. She says, "Ask yourself this simple question: Has it worked?" As most of us can answer from experience, speaking on behalf of law enforcement, no, the war on drugs has never worked. Today, drugs are cheaper, more potent, and easier to get than they were in 1970 when the war on drugs began. On federal surveys, teenagers consistently report that it's easier to buy marijuana than alcohol, which is legal and age-regulated. And beyond its failure, the war on drugs has unintended but devastatingly violent consequences. As with alcohol prohibition, drugs and cannabis are under the control of bloodthirsty cartels fighting over untaxed profits and killing police and innocent civilians in their crossfire. Many of us have spent our entire careers risking our lives for the sake of the drug war. We have seen colleagues lose their lives in this struggle. We enforce the drug laws by arresting users and dealers alike, though we know that most drug users aren't violent. Usually, they just want to be left alone. Whether we're working undercover or clearing dealers from street corners or responding to gang shootings, we put ourselves in harm's way because we have been taught that damaging the drug trade will win this war and reduce its associated evils. But observation and long experience have taught us that this is an unwinnable war. Prohibition is not a deterrent, never has been, never will. Every time we put a drug kingpin away, a line of people are waiting to take his place. The illicit drug market is far too lucrative to be arrested away. It's time to end this war and try another approach. Last comment. We remember a time when kids would run toward police cars because they thought the police would help. We are proud of our profession and want to put a stop to the widespread perception that police are an occupying army who only care about drug busts in minority neighborhoods. We need to spend our time and resources arresting criminals who truly threaten public safety, such as murderers, rapists, and drunk drivers, instead of chasing after nonviolent drug offenders.
Thank you. Somebody want to wrap it up?
Yeah, Anthony Bany from the Buffalo Cannabis Movement. I just want to say that I did research for last year on the arrest statistics on who's being arrested for low-level possession of cannabis, and we found that over 80% were, you know, African-Americans. So we're clearly enforcing a law disproportionately against minority communities. Last time we had come and testified, Council President Pridgen had brought up that those who sell cannabis to children are criminals. Well, my question is, why are the majority of those being arrested under the age of 22 or 23? We're arresting mostly 18- to 25-year-olds. If they're selling to kids, they're pretty much kids themselves. Why aren't we targeting 30-, 40-year-olds? You know, so this is an issue that we should talk about. Another issue that Councilmember Fontana had brought up at a previous hearing was that he had been to a bodega and they were selling cannabis under the table. Well, if you had legal dispensaries that were registered with the liquor authority, then they would have to have an ID to get that cannabis, and you would have a lot less in the underground market. And if it was in the underground market, I'm sure it'd be going to adults and not children. We need to really think about that. And I mean, when we're targeting minorities in neighborhoods, you're causing distrust between the community and the police. And we don't want to see what's going on throughout our country happening in our area. I mean, Councilmember Wingo was at the Black Lives Matter rally, and he spoke, talking about how Black Lives Matter. Well, I mean, if we really think that Black Lives Matter, let's stop arresting them for something that we know whites and blacks do the same of. I was in Tonawanda doing door-to-door petitioning, and I seen multiple people consuming cannabis, white people. How come they're allowed to go about freely to do this, but yet we target African-American youth? It's disgusting because it takes away from their opportunities and future careers.
Probably if you had a cannabis petition, they felt a lot more comfortable, I presume, in Tonawanda. Mr. Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I spoke to Anthony earlier today, and we had a quick conversation. I asked Anthony if you could tell us exactly what you want in about two to three minutes. I think we can make progress, but I think we're fatigued now because of all of the explanations and all of the anecdotes that were conveyed today. Then Chair Franzak asked, again, in one sentence, what do you want from the council? And then we moved on to another subject, which has nothing to do with, I believe, what you would be petitioning us for.
Well, there are two separate proposals.
Anthony, don't interrupt me, please. So as far as my presence at an event this past weekend, I explained exactly why I was there, you know? And it was not to take a position on a movement. It was to recognize the fact that there is a disproportionate minority representation, not only on the police force and law enforcement, but also in the justice judicial system. So blacks have always been disproportionately represented in vast areas. So when you talk about cannabis, let's not make this about race, please. If you want us to pass some legislation or to write a resolution requesting that the governor of the state make it legal for you to grow and dispense cannabis in all of its forms for all of these different types of applications, then say that. But do not make your request and try to petition this council based on race, the fact that we live, I live, as a black man every day. Do not try, please, to ever, just don't insult me and ever try to appeal to me based off of what I know to be true and what I live on a daily basis. So I'm going to ask again if we could, in one sentence or in one minute, ask you what it is you would like from this council to do. Now, I've only been here since September, and I've only met you a few times, and you've always been very respectful. Today, you kind of teeter on the line of disrespect about what you are tired of this and tired of that. So what I really want to know, again, and as Chair Franzak had asked earlier, what exactly is it that you would like for this council to do in very clear and explicit terms so that maybe then we could begin to move forward on something tangible? Because right now, I have only been here since September, and I'm still lost as to what you want, because the last time you came to my office, it was for the legalization of this. The next time you come to my office, Anthony, you're a smart guy. You have a lot of information. But what I need to know is what exactly are you frustrated with that you have not seen action from this council, so that we can, at this time, begin to move forward on whatever it is we can do? Anyone can answer that question?
Okay. Well, I personally think that the council needs to write up a resolution in which they come to an agreement with the commissioner, that there needs to be a study of why we are targeting minorities in the community of Buffalo, and there needs to be an agreement to not enforce the law if it's for low possession because not harming anybody. And if we are going to enforce this law, it has to be equal, because you can't have 38% of the city being African-American and making up 80% of the rest.
Your statement doesn't mention that. It just mentions that anybody with two ounces or less of marijuana would be decriminalized. That's what you're saying here, regardless of, you know, ethnicity or what have you. Right?
And again, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, real quick, again, Anthony, please just make this about the legalization and what this can do for the community. We have gotten, we've heard the anecdotes already from various people, how it has helped their quality of life. So if that's what this is about, that's what this is about, and we'll know, as a result of whatever happens with the passing of this legislation, certain people won't be tired because of that. A certain population will no longer be charged or tired because of that. Talk about what you want us to do. Talk about what we can do, and then we can move forward.
Councilmember Forlato.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to be clear, when you guys were, when you were mentioning you were asking us to do a resolution, just so everyone's on the same page, if the council voted on a resolution and sent that to the state officials, to the governor, something like that, that would be completely different than the city having any type of enforcement on anything. So I think there's been some miscommunication addressed, but if we do a resolution, that's not going to affect what Buffalo Police enforcement, anything. So I just wanted to be clear that we do not have any of that power. So, thank you.
In other words, this body, I mean, the city could pass a local law about having two ounces or less, but I think those would be trumped by state and federal law, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Forlato's a lawyer, so he's nodding in affirmative. Is that right?
If I may speak this briefly, my name is Edward Garrett.
Let's wrap this up, so if you wanted to...
Beg your pardon?
Maybe you can come to a conclusion, so we can...
Yes. I had a longer speech. I will not give that right now, and I wanted to apologize about if the statistics we were bringing forward had offended the councilman in any way. It was not our intention. But what we wanted to mention was that while we do understand that the city doesn't have the power to usurp state and federal law, that we have, as citizens, many times gone to the state and federal governments. We have appealed to these people. Oftentimes, we've been met either with silence or with violence, and this is, we've come to you because we feel like we have nowhere else to go. Where, in fact, are we to go if the state is to respond with violence and if the federal government will ignore us every day? So I think what the councilman had stated, almost verbatim, sounds exactly like what we would do, is we would request that the Buffalo Common Council pass a resolution that would strongly urge the New York State Assembly and the governor to pass a bill that would allow for the legalization of recreational marijuana up to a certain amount, two ounces, as we talked about in this bill, or any amount that the New York State Legislature agrees on. But we talked about this before, and Assemblywoman Crystal People Stokes and Senator Liz Kruger held a meeting in this very room where literally 50-plus people came in, and everyone spoke in support of that bill, and that bill died in committee. So we've come to you because we don't know where else to go.
Well, that's good. You can always come to us. This is the people's house. Everyone can come in, and we thank you for some impassioned and, you know, very compelling arguments. Mr. Rivera, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion is to send without recommendation.
Motion is sent without recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Forlato. Thank you.